Welcome, I'm Tim Skoggins and I am calling this meeting of the Chaffsberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Monday, May 15, 2017. As usual, the first item of business is to check with our board and see if anyone has a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening.
No.
Nope?
No.
Okay. Approval of minutes? I did not see any minutes this week.
I don't think we had any minutes for this week.
Okay. Warrants. Let's see, first I have, this is check warrant number 35, an amount of $2,302. Is there a motion to approve? It was by Art. Second by Ken. This is Vermont State Treasurer, animal license return. What is that about?
This is, when we collect the animal fees, a portion goes to the state. We never saw this before because the clerk did this all, but now that our fee is coming to the town, you have signed the warrant for it to go back to the state.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number 35, an amount of $2,302 is approved by a vote of 4-0-0.
So, this one is new looking a water warrant? That's paying on water bills. The Town Hall for the Fire Department.
So, this would be water warrant number two, in the amount of, it looks like there are several bills here. They all appear to be the same warrant. So, is there a motion to approve water warrant number two, in the amount of 70 plus 182 plus 270? David will add that up.
522.
522?
So moved.
Moved by Art. Seconded by Ken. So, these are for our, okay, so for Buck Hill 61, Buck Hill 69, that'd be the fire station, yes, and then Buck Hill 166.
69's the garage.
Okay. Water bills for Town Hall, Highway Department Garage, and the fire station. Got it?
Tim, in the past, we've always just had me transfer the money, but when you do that, it's outside the system, so there was never a warrant. So, I thought that probably to keep a paper trail, we should actually have you guys weigh in on it.
Yeah, makes sense. Any more discussion? All in favor of approval of water warrant number two, in the amount of $522, say aye.
Aye.
Water warrant number two is approved, 4-0-0. Payroll warrant number 22, in the amount of $18,576.66.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, payroll warrant number 22, in the amount of $18,576.66, is approved, 4-0-0. And check warrant number 35, in the amount of $40,646.18.
So moved.
Motion to approve from Art.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken. Items over $1,000, we have $5,600 to Blue Cross Blue Shield, $2,100 to Bennington Regional Commission, $3,000 to Bennington County Sheriff, $1,600 to Catamount Environmental, that would be our water testing, I presume?
No, that's the asbestos testing of the North Road houses.
Thank you. $4,000 to Landen Assessment Services, or Assessor, $6,800 to TAM, $2,200 to UI Insurance Services.
And to Fire Department Insurance.
Thank you. $10,000 to Weaver Landscaping for the sidewalk.
And that is the last payment.
Last payment.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
So, check warrant number 35, in the amount of $40,646.18, is approved, 4-0-0. All right, are there any announcements? Mitch?
I see it's in an email.
You could be a public comment, but your announcement is on here, so, about Ordinary Hero Celebration, this Saturday, May 20, from 2 to 4 at Galusha House.
Yeah, I'd like to invite all the board and anyone in town who might be watching this to come on up and celebrate Chaffsberry's 2017 Ordinary Hero. It's up at the Galusha Homestead, up on 7A. Show up around 2, and we'll announce who it is about 2:30 or so. Come on up.
All right, thank you. As I usually do, I would remind people that we have several open positions in town government, in particular DRB, and most especially the Planning Commission, is in need of commissioners. So, if you would like to serve the town, you can indicate your willingness to do so by sending a letter of intent or an email to either myself or the Town Administrator, David Kiernan, and let, just say, "I would like to serve." Ordinary Heroes, this Friday, Big Truck Night at Chaffsberry Elementary is from 5:30 to 7:30. At 6:30, we will be, we, Chaffsberry, the town, will be honoring our Fire Department volunteers with a special ceremony, recognizing their service, service that ranges from one year to, can you believe, 69 years on the Fire Department. So, everyone, I urge you to come out and help us honor the service of our volunteer Fire Department.
Charlie Beckerman.
Charlie Beckerman, yeah. Household Hazardous Waste Day is this Saturday, May 20, at the Bennington Transfer Station. So, all that old paint and gasoline that you've been saving up, you can, you can take there this, this Saturday. Again, we remind people that as part of our Solid Waste Alliance, countywide Solid Waste Alliance, while Chaffsberry does not hold Hazardous Waste Days on our own anymore, we do that as a county and it moves around from place to place. The last one was up in Dorset, this one is here in Bennington. The Cemetery Committee has asked me to make the following announcement regarding displaced cemeteries. With spring here, with spring here, it is time to clean up our cemeteries and remove any seasonal decorations that have been placed. Please also be reminded that the new operating procedure for cemeteries includes the following language. Live annual and perennial plants and hanging baskets on shepherd hooks are allowed and should be placed close to the gravestone so as not to impede maintenance. Artificial plants and flowers are not allowed and will be removed. Trees, bushes, and shrubs are not allowed as the roots interfere with the stability of memorials and headstones. Existing trees, bushes, and shrubs may be removed if they are detrimental to the stability of the gravestone. If such action is necessary, the lot owner will be notified if possible. Vigilights and honorary medallions are allowed. Seasonal decorations will be allowed but must be removed by those who place them within 30 days after the holiday. All other items will be removed. Anything that interferes with cemetery maintenance will be removed. Only corner markers may mark a burial lot. No fencing, curbing, hedges, or any type of enclosure is allowed around any lot. Granite and marble benches are permissible only if they serve as a grave marker. Benchmarks can fall to the size of the lot. I'm just trying to remember, was there anything else we needed to announce that I forgot to write down? I don't think so. Okay. Are there any public comments?
In regards to the Hazardous Waste Day, Chaffsberry used to have a semi-annual or biannual free tire deposit. Is that still happening, or is that not happening anymore?
Chaffsberry's not doing it anymore. Do you know what this, the situation is with tires?
The easiest way to handle your tires is to turn them in when you buy new tires for their fee, because we wind up paying more than what you would pay if it's $2 at the dealer, we pay more to actually get rid of them there. Because it's, it's all costs to everybody.
Is this section open for comments about anything, or is there other business?
Anything you'd like, sure.
My name is Kurt Merrow, I live on Buckle Road, and as most of you know, I'm hosting a community-owned solar array. You've probably seen it, if you've driven by. We plan on expanding it in 2017, and under 2017 rules, any site that hosts a solar array has to have two letters. I will read briefly the email that I got from Bima Nida, who is the owner of PowerGuru, the developer. The new net metering order for 2017 requires that solar be installed on preferred sites. These include parking lots, landfills, brownfields, quarries, carports, or previously developed sites. A specific location in a duly adopted municipal plan under 24 VSA Number 17 for the siting of a renewable energy plant or specific type or size of renewable energy plant, provided the plant meets any siting criteria recommended in the plan for the location, and a specific location that is identified in a joint letter of support from the municipal legislative body and municipal and regional planning commission in the community where the net metering system will be located. What that means is that in order for us to have PSB approval, we have to have a letter from the BCRC, which Bima has already received a verbal positive comment about the current site of the solar being a preferred site. And I know this isn't an agenda, and you don't have to act on it tonight, but I'm hopefully that at a future meeting, I can, I will have letters prepared to have the Select Board write a letter saying that this existing site is a preferred site for a, an expansion of the array. And I've got copies of everything that I just said for all of you. So, it's just food for thought until I come around again. This was with a proposed letter that the Select Board designed.
So, is that a, a new rule, that you have to have the?
Yes, starting in 2017, any, any, any solar array has to, be deemed a preferred site by the, whatever Planning Commission that legislates the area. In this case, since there isn't any existing laws regarding that, as far as Bennington zoning, I guess, it's the BCRC. So, it would just be a letter from the Select Board saying, yes, the, the current site is a preferred site for an expansion.
I think this letter from the state here would be part of the same.
Yeah, I got a letter. I just got it, I haven't read it yet, but it looks pretty much the same.
Yeah, so I'm just introducing it, and hopefully I can get on the agenda at a future date to pursue that.
Absolutely.
Where does this, where does the DRB come in? Do they have any say in this, that we'd have to go before them first, before?
I think the first thing to do is, because it's part of the town plan, this is a new law coming here, we'd have to do a little research to see where it goes to, and who would have any comment on it from here.
Yeah, I don't believe the DRB would be involved, because we don't have any bylaws governing solar.
There's a part written into the new town plan, or the last revision of the town plan, that spoke on solar fields, but I don't recall the wording at the moment. But if we refer this to them, and we can get back to the board, and let y'all know what they will do.
Yeah, the subject of solar is coming up all the time. There's been a lot of stuff coming from BCRC about it, requiring us to, to make energy plans and to think hard and long about any places that we want or don't want solar. And the Planning Commission has discussed it and decided that, as far as they're concerned, there's really no, they don't have any strong opinions about where we should not have solar.
I would think prime agriculture would be something you would want a solar field on, but?
The, the point that was made by Chris Williams, our chair, was, we don't prohibit building on prime ag land. And some other members of the Planning Commission, Mike Chianowski, mentioned that, in fact, solar panels, if you put them on prime ag, they have less of a lifetime than, than a, than a house or a barn. So, it was their opinion that, one, we have lots of prime ag in our, our region, and if we're not going to prohibit other types of building, like houses and barns and that sort of thing, we probably don't have a good reason to prohibit.
So, it hasn't been talked about.
Solar, yeah.
Okay.
So, we have been presented various, various solar proposals in the past where a blessing was not required, and the board has chosen just to, to not act and let them go forward.
Yeah, I, I, under 20, before January 1st, 2017, it was a, it wasn't in your responsibility to say either yes or no, but starting in 2017, you do have a say.
Good, thank you. Other public comments? Ed Corey.
We spoke before on Corey Drive over there, the street repaving. I've been, I've been doing, give a price, this is on everything, the whole street, brick from beginning to 67 hour, we got through to the end. There's this price at 14,000. I would like that, so it's one point to have it done. The street has been, you know, very low maintenance. To me, that would make it all done at once. The trouble is where the apron was put in years before, the other, always potholes right there. If we just had one solid strip all the way right up through, I think it'd make a good job for a good many years.
All right. Well, we will appreciate your getting an estimate for us, we'll take it under advisement. And of course, we've got lots of roads that, that need maintenance, and every year, it's a matter of what, what are the priorities and how much money have we got to do it with? So, we'll take it under advisement.
But that road has been in, that blacktop, some of it, the apron's been down almost 40 years, and the whole street's been blacktop over 25. And the only work that's been done on it, when we put a driveway in, we paid a portion of the road, you know, shed the portion where, you know, it was off. And even right now, it's in good shape, you know, where it would take, you know, a skimco over good, and probably be good for another 25 years.
Okay.
You want that back?
No, no, we can keep it.
Thank you. Anything else?
And is there any way of knowing whether that's going to be done, you know, this year, or if I put a request in?
I can tell you it's probably not going to happen this year. We had, as you know, a devastating mud season in February this year, and are, were debating at our last meeting whether or not we had the money to fix portions of road that just got really torn up badly in February. So, it's, it's a tough year to think about places that are, that are always passable.
When you're talking year, are you talking until the 1st of July? Is that when financial year starts, or?
We're talking through the 2018 season right now. We're, we're trying to see what we can get, it's done in 2018, in terms of roads that are likely to become unpassable again. So, a paved road that's a little bumpy is going to be down on the list compared to a lot of roads that actually become impassable during mud season.
I would like to express that, you know, the town, the people over there have paid a lot of property tax, and you're to me, it's not being fair to them. I understand what you're saying to an extent, but on the other hand, you know, that road could be blacktop, you know, at a very usual cost right now, and lasts for another 25 or 30 years.
Your point is well taken, and that's something that David has brought to our attention many times recently, is that if we can find a way to get ahead of, of the disasters, regular maintenance does save us money in the long term.
And is there any way you can let me know you don't want that light?
No. You're going to have your apron done after July, going to patch up that part, the corner there that's broken, and bring that up as best as we can, but?
And when you speak of apron, how far back are you going?
I don't know, I haven't measured it yet, but I saw the part you were talking about, and we could, we could make that better for you. There's no doubt about that. We have a number of patching projects coming up, but 14,000 is a substantial part of my meager paving budget, and?
What, you're talking about 3,000 for the apron?
Oh, I don't know. We're not going to spend $3,000.
That's what the other part was, that I submitted before.
Well, we're not going to spend $3,000 on it. We'll fix it. It's a town road, we'll fix it, but I'm not going to toss out a price off the top of my head here for you.
Well, that's why I put in the other bit for.
Yeah, well, we'll get our prices from someone, and we'll fix the road for you. I mean, that's, I think, fair, that we?
I don't think so, but Doines has done all the work before, I think it's, you know, should be him to do that work down there.
I think that's all we have to say, that we can offer you on that at this point.
And once again, I'm going to ask, how far back are you going with the apron?
He already told you he can't tell you that exactly.
The what?
He already told you he hasn't measured it, he doesn't know the answer to that exactly.
Are you going further than where it was before, where it kept pothole and all the time?
That, that's all. We don't have the answer to that question. If you don't have anything else, we'll move on.
Then is there any way that they could inform me of, you know, what the apron's going to look like and how far back they're going with it?
Well, this is a town road, so when we look at it, we'll let you know what we're going to do with it.
All right, any other public comments? All right, Treasurer's Report. Melanie, welcome.
Hello. I thought I'd call your attention to the final school reconciliation, you can see there in the receipts. We had a big discussion about this last year, because that was a great big chunk of unexpected cash that came our way. This, this year, it's a more reasonable 27,000. So, that, that represents the, the difference between what the, the state thought we, we would require in school taxes and what the final tally was. So, they returned that money to us.
And I remember last year, you kept telling me that that money is not really mine.
It's not really yours to know. It's, it's, I know, you really, really wanted it, but it's really just the school tax.
There was a lot last year.
Yeah, it's, it's from, you know, when you're talking about 5 million or whatever it is, it was rounding error last year, and this year, it's even smaller rounding error. But the only thing it does is it makes our cash position slightly better, which, as you can see right now, we've got over $400,000 in the checking account, which means probably it buys me a month before I need to get the, the tax anticipation note. So, last year, we were able to push it into July or August, and it looks like we'll probably be able to do that too. So, the bottom line is it saves us a little bit of money in interest. But everything else is, you know, it's mid-month, so I can't really look at a closed month, but we're in, we're in good shape as, as I've been recording the last few months, everything's looking pretty good. We've got water money coming in pretty briskly this time of year. I wanted to, I know I've made the speech before, but I am the only one who can receive cash for, for water. We've got two locked boxes, I'm the only one with, with keys to them. There's one inside and one outside. If you must pay in cash and you need a receipt, you've got to come during my office hours, which is between 10 and 1. Nobody else is going to write you a receipt, it's got to be me. We're pretty strict about that because of, you know, reasons of internal control. And Marlene can take money for, for her things, and I can, I'm the only one who can rece, well, and Joan, Joan Varco can also receive cash. If you can't make it to the office between 10 and 1, you're really going to need to get a cashier's check or a money order. That's sort of the bottom line. I know that some people don't like leaving cash in my box, even though I'm the only one with the key, and if that's the case, then they need to find some other way to pay. We've run into some problems with this, and just wanted to reiterate that.
Okay.
It's for everybody's protection. So, anyway, that's it. Anybody have any questions for me?
Did you want to talk about reserve funds? I have, that came in with your report in my email.
Yeah, let's just, just take a snapshot of what the activity is. You can see the only thing that's happening is, the 260 fund there is water, so that's the amount of money I've taken in so far this month on water, $7,200, $7,300.
Oh, the 260, okay, yep, okay.
No other activity in any of the other reserve accounts lately.
Okay. Any more questions for Melanie? Thank you. Ed Maitre, Road Foreman, report.
Steve's unavailable to a family issue for the evening, so I'm going to make the road report for him. The first important thing is, we, a lot of work was done on East Road, the areas that had the major mud problems over the winter. East Road, Maple Hill, Meyer Road, they were all resurfaced last week in preparation for the major repairs coming up. Anyone who's driven on today realizes they're driving over a corduroy road, and it's gotten incredibly bad. We went back to our supplier, it turns out that they did not mix the material correctly, so that after it rained, there weren't enough finds in it to keep it together. So, as cars drove on it, every road that we did washedboarded, and bad. Washboarding like I haven't seen. So, we apologize for the delay, we're starting the project again tomorrow. Unfortunately, we, we're on three days prop use and labor. Our supplier is providing us all new material, to put over the material that's there, and will mix it together, which will smooth out the roads. Then we're going to have some discussion with them over our loss of three days due to defective material. But if your road is, has nothing to do, as I received a few calls today with how it was put down, it wasn't mixed properly at the plant, and there's really nothing that the town can do about it, except replace it starting tomorrow, and it's going to take three more days to get around again. Apologize for the delays, and as I got the emails, a number of you hit those corduroy roads at Sunday afternoon, and we're not happy about it, so.
Happy Mother's Day.
Yes.
Can you bury it?
Yeah, what we're going to do is about, put new material right over the top, and as we blade it in, and it'll mix in, it's the same material with more finds and done properly. It'll be chloridized down, packed in, and that is going to be the base for the final rebuilding, which we'll do when we go into the new fiscal year. But we're just trying to smooth it out to give a nice surface. A lot of work went into it in three days to get to most of the areas, almost all the areas, only to have it look nice for a day, and then it rained and, if there's nothing to hold the stone in place, it just, just makes washboard, and board, and we have a lot of them. So, we'll get to it as, as quickly as we can over the next three days, and we'll continue the discussions with our suppliers about all the other costs we just lost over the three days. So, on other news, speaking of paving, our East Road paving grant was, was turned down. On, uh, other news, speaking of paving, our East Road paving grant was, was turned down by the state, uh, which, you know, we will undoubtedly get it next year. I'll be optimistic about that. We did get four or five years in a row of paving grants. You know, they, they are supposed to move around, so, uh, we were asking for the max of one-seventy-five, and, uh, we'll just reapply for it next year. We were also turned down for the Structures Grant to start construction on the Shasbury Hollow culvert. Again, I think that's because I've gotten several Structures Grants over the last couple of years, so, uh, I'm sure we'll do better on that next time around.
Did you have the match in the budget, and is that money available, or does that have to stop?
Well, the match is not in the budget for the culvert. Well, it is. It's fourteen thousand. I probably think it's fourteen thousand in the Shasbury culvert. The culvert as a Structures Grant is a ten percent match, so that would cover, uh, fifty percent of our match, as I remember, if I remember the figures correctly. So we would be ready for that. That's just gonna sit because we'll need that next year anyway. The paving reserve is at thirty-six thousand right now, with thirty-five thousand going into it, uh, next fiscal eighteen. Uh, that sounds like a lot of money. It's not.
No, no, no.
Because one of, one of the projects we're looking at, and one of the truly distressed paved roads in town is Birch Hill. And we're talking well over a hundred thousand dollars to do that road, and that road's not gonna stay together. So I'm hoping that by finding some more money and being able to transfer more money to the paving reserve in fiscal nineteen, with money we built up over these two years, we can rebuild Birch Hill. Because it's, no grant money for that. That's our road. We're not getting any grant money, so that's strictly out of our pocket.
So, so the match was going to come out of the paving, paving reserve fund?
For East Road?
Yes, okay.
So we'll just leave that in there as a way to build up for the, eventually, uh, most of the paved roads are in pretty decent condition. East Road needs to be redone. Buck Hill here, two miles, although that's a grant road, that's gonna need to be done soon too. But Birch Hill, uh, if you take a ride on it, it's, it's kinda coming apart. And there's nothing, we went up there with, uh, Peckham last year to look through and see any kind of thing from coal paving to anything. It's, nothing's gonna work. It needs to be taken up and replaced, and we're talking, you know, one hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that's all, has to be on us, so... Uh, building up a year here is to our benefit, because we have to get a little ahead here.
Dave, did you ask Peckham when you went up there if it would be worth it to put in, uh, a two-layer course when you paved that? In other words, heavier base course and then a flinger tack course?
Well, when we get, when we get closer to it, I know, I know what you're talking about, we'll, we'll go into more detail with them. Uh, when we went up there, because of the condition of it, I was really looking like, uh, like coal pavement is much cheaper.
Yeah.
Anything. I was looking at the cheap ends of things at that point. Uh, knowing that we need a lot of money, we'll get into, uh, just what you're talking about when we get closer. We're talking about fiscal nineteen at the earliest for that. And as you know, as we discussed this morning, uh, that road's gonna be getting there by fiscal nineteen.
Right.
But, but we definitely need to start putting the money aside to do it.
Well, it just, it just occurred to me when we were talking.
Yeah.
Like, some of those big jobs that I worked on, like Route Seven and those, when they do those, they'll put down a base course, which is like three-quarter inch or even inch tall. Like four or five inches thick, and then each course as you go up, it's finer.
Yeah, a lot of that is, is to make it last longer and also to take the weight. I mean, we can save a lot of base because it's not gonna take a lot of weight, but the, the steepness of that road is what makes it difficult. That's why we can't use a lot of the other methods, because the steepness, if you're coal paved, you'll have, again, you'll have ridges all the way down, so... Uh, it's just something we have to keep in mind and, and start putting more money aside for. I say in fiscal nineteen, because I believe, uh, our second-to-last vehicle will be off. I'm hoping to put that into it just because we really need to get that road done. That's, that's gonna be a problem if we don't get to it in two or three years. And it's gonna take us that long to get the money, so... On, on better notes, we received our, uh, grant from Better, Better Roads for the upper Shasbury Hollow work that we had the engineering study for. Uh, I think that was in fiscal fifteen. We were turned down for the grant in sixteen to do the work, and we received the grant this year. I just got, uh, Thursday to go ahead with the work, so we'll work with the original engineer to put together a plan, twenty thousand dollars, and we'll, uh, get the upper part, the end part of Shasbury Hollow fixed.
What is the nature of the work that will be done there?
Uh, it's all ditching and slope work. It's, it's part of keeping the road material out of the, out of the river and also stabilizing the road. If you go up past Wyers Camp, it's basically is a dirt road, but it's all kinds of silt and sediment that flows off of the river, so this is all to try and keep it in place and, drain the road a little bit better and into the right places where you want it, so... It goes all the way, it goes quite a distance. I mean, we covered quite a distance in that grant, but twenty thousand, we figured it was a good start to, uh, get it going. And we'll use a little to match that, so it'll probably turn out to be like a thirty thousand dollar project.
Is, is that one of your name, Arma, Arma Low Ditches or just a ditch?
Uh, in part of it, what you have to do, it's either stone or grass, uh, as designed. This is a design, yeah, this is a design project by the engineer we had up here, so, uh, it all has to meet a whole bunch of standards from the state for us to get the money, so it'll, it'll be done, uh, exactly to the specs. And if we don't finish by September eighteenth, we have to put down the mats. Can't just put straw and seed down. We have to put down the mats and everything, so there's a timing thing involved in it. It has to be completed by December of eighteen, so, uh, the money's there if, if it, you know, if it rains all summer and we're having one thing after another, then, uh, you know, we have time to get it in at a later date. But it'd be nice to get it in before September if possible.
Has anybody checked on that Shasbury Hollow culvert, seen it's got any worse?
The one that's, the one that's being, uh, that we just got turned down on?
Yeah, well, the one, the big one there that we've been talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I haven't seen any notice, uh, or noticed any change in it. I haven't really looked underneath since...
Well, you couldn't, you couldn't put big old seed in there anyway, because water's high.
Yeah, but, uh, I would, I wouldn't expect, I'll go with the lifespan study that says we still have a few years left on it, which is, I think, what the state's basing on too, to a certain extent, when they look at it, and they have to pick projects from all the towns. It's from District One, so every town District One, uh, serves, they have to pick who wins. And I don't know who, uh, who else puts things this year, but, uh, we have gotten a number of them over the last few years, I think.
Well, I didn't know. I mean, it could've got worse. Nobody knew. That's all I was...
Yeah, well, let's go up and take a look at it. Like you said, right now, the water's so high everywhere, but give it a little bit and we can go see. But I, I would think, uh, the original estimate will hold. I don't, I don't see anything too bad in it.
Well, it's mainly, it was undercutting was the problem, but if it goes into there too far, you couldn't get a problem.
Yep. The other good news is we have, we received another grant from, uh, Better Roads to, uh, update our culvert and road inventory, which will assist us when we have to start doing all this paperwork for the water management people. Uh, and the total update of our culvert inventory will be helpful all the way around, and we'll see where we stand with those, and, uh, the others are, going back to Shasbury Hollow, there's one up above that that probably needs work, so, uh, we'll get the list and we'll get a little study of them and see what, what needs to be done, uh, which will be helpful in the long term.
So that will allow us to get, what, an engineer to go around inspect them and count?
Uh, well, get, allow us to get Jim Henderson from BCRC to go around. And, and make a list of all of them, and then, then we can take it from there, so... Yeah, that's, that's what it turns down to. You just prioritize what you have. You try and determine the ages of them all and just see, uh, you know, as, as we look at them, what really needs to be done. I think most are probably in pretty good shape, but there are a few that, you know, we don't need something, I'm sure.
And that's just an inventory and inspection. That doesn't include suggestions for where we need inventory.
I think that about covers it for the, the roads. Uh, like I said, the roads that people are driving on the washboards on now, again, apologize, bad mix from the plant, and we'll have it fixed. If it doesn't rain in the next three days, we'll have them all fixed for a second time, and then we'll start discussing with them about our wasted three days last week.
They shouldn't have any problems with that?
No. It should work out.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right, now we have our special guest section of the meeting. First up, we have from the Bennington Chamber of Commerce, Matt Harrington and Jonah Spivak, who wanna tell us about the great things going on in, uh, in the chamber these days. Why don't you guys pull up another chair and just sit here at the table with us?
I don't know if this is my best angle, but, uh, we'll work with it. First of all, thanks for giving us your time today. Uh, my name's Jonah Spivak. Uh, I actually grew up here in Shasbury, you know Hawkins House right between the Aaron Kelly Motel and Shasbury Asom. So that's a lovely little connection to have. Currently, my wife and I own the Hawkins House in Bennington, Vermont. I also have a graphic design studio, Inspector Design. I'm a volunteer tonight in my role as the President of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I'm here with our Executive Director, uh, Matt Harrington. I'm just gonna say a couple of things about what's been happening at the Chamber recently in the big picture, and then I'm gonna kinda hand it over to Matt to give you a little more detail about what's happening in the organization itself. Uh, first of all, in terms of the big picture, uh, our board has made the decision that over the next three years, by 2020, we will become a fully regional Chamber of Commerce. And let me explain a little bit of what that means, because we've always been a regional Chamber of Commerce. We're the Bennington area Chamber of Commerce. But traditionally, that region was the southern part of Bennington County. Uh, we are now expanding that region to include all of the Shires of Vermont. Our goal this year is to get between thirty and forty members in the Northshire, next year fifty to a hundred, and in the third year, a hundred to two hundred. So by the end of three years, we'll have an organization of essential, essentially parity between the Northshire and the Southshire. That includes at the leadership level on the board as well. Uh, this Thursday at our board meeting, we'll be welcoming our first Northshire board member. That's Ed Morrow. He's the founder of the Northshire Bookstore. Uh, our organization is gonna also grow to be three nodes, one node in Bennington, as we've always had one, doing membership services and tourism, uh, services. We have a node at the Welcome Center on Route two seventy-nine. Uh, you may not know this, but we are the only Chamber of Commerce in the state that runs the Welcome Center in their community, and that's a tremendous asset we have. The third node is gonna ultimately be in Manchester. We expect that to happen next year, so we will have boots on the ground in Manchester to provide member and tourism services. But of course, we need to first develop that membership to support that effort. And I mentioned our goal this year was thirty to forty members in the Northshire. We're already at forty-six, and now we're gunning for fifty. One thing that we, regionalization does not mean, is it does not mean that we're gonna take our eyes off the ball in terms of how we represent the Southshire. That's incredibly important to us. And we, in fact, uh, one of the things we're doing is we have an ad hoc group of board members helping us keep an eye on exactly that issue, making sure that we're doing this expansion, and we're doing it right. Because what we're not gonna do is something that's gonna hurt our base here in the Southshire. But I will tell you right now, the reason we're doing this, and in my mind, the most important reason, is this will benefit all of us in the Southshire by having this merger with, uh, the Northshire. So I'm gonna pass it to Matt a little bit, and of course, the most important thing that we're here for is to hear from you. Any questions or concerns you may have?
Yeah, thanks, Jonah. Um, I'm gonna be brief, because Q and I tends to be our, our best time spent. Jonah and I have done a little bit of a road show over the last couple, uh, weeks and months, just to, um, help, uh, increase the communication with, uh, certain entities, certain agencies that might have some questions, and so we wanna be transparent and kind of open. And here ideas from all of you and needs as well as we kind of expand. I'll be brief, you know, I think Jonah touched upon it. I think the way that we're doing it is the right way, uh, which is more of an organic growth. Uh, as Jonah mentioned, you know, I think the, the end of this great experiment is to see whether does the Northshire kind of adopt us as, as a chamber as well? And so what we're doing very, um, with, with a good focus is to say, okay, as that membership grows in Northshire, it will also grow its presence, our presence there, leadership on our board, and so, uh, we wanna make sure that everybody is rolling up the sleeves, putting a little bit, little bit of skin in the game. Um, and then I think we can take, and this, this, we're all kinda conclude, a lot of the good things that I think we've done over the last couple of years as a chamber. We've, we've moved from just being a tourism destination marketing agency to also providing a lot of business services. One of the things that we did here, uh, from the Manchester group, as we surveyed them, as we talked to them, as we went around and discussed with businesses, what did they like about a chamber, what didn't they like about a chamber? Uh, one of it was, um, providing more services to businesses to be successful. Uh, and, and I know Jonah feels the same way and I do, and our board does, that our role here is to create a greater ecosystem for businesses to survive and thrive. And so, um, through a lot of thought, and through three retreats last year, through surveying our membership, through looking at actually the, the, the change that's happened in the Chamber world as in a nation, and especially in Vermont. If you look up into the Champlain Valley, if you look at Albany and how they've consolidated some chambers, it's really that, uh, we're stronger as a region than we are in our separate kind of towns. And so, um, the ability to pull on the Bromley and the Stratton and, and fine dining and great shops up in Manchester, but also encourage people to come fish and hike in, uh, in the Southshire, to enjoy the beers and the brewiness down in the Southshire. I think we're stronger together, and so with that in mind, uh, we took this kind of bold vision and, and, uh, we're hoping to kind of actualize all this by our 2020 vision. So with that, I kinda wanna open it up to questions, and I, Jonah and I will kinda do a tag team on questions.
What's, what's the, the plan for try to attract more, I don't know, store shop stuff like that? Because I can't tell you exactly now how many years ago it was, but when they tore that wall down in Saratoga and they rebuilt it, they built, I mean, they've got mid-box stores over there, seemed like by the hundreds. And of course, that brings in the little stores, and I mean, I used to go over there all the time. But now they got the Walmart in Bennington, so you can at least buy something in Bennington. And I, you know, I think that was a big mistake for the years that they had, oh, you can't have only seventy-five thousand square foot store. Look what's down in that store now.
I'm actually gonna move my chair around here. I just feel like I'm fixing the wrong way.
I don't know how you guys feel about that, but...
Do you wanna start or do you want me to start? Uh, well, first of all, it's a great question. Uh, and look, if we do nothing, we know where we're going. Uh, we've had numerous reports and studies in terms of what's happening to us demographically. Our population's getting older. Our younger people are moving away. And if we do nothing, we have a pretty clear, clear picture of where we're going to, and it's not a place we wanna go.
Yeah.
Uh, by the same token, we know which demographic group is on the rise. It's a group that's as large, or even in fact, a little bit larger than the baby boomer generation, which we know had such a huge impact, and that's actually called the millennials. We've heard a lot of buzz and talk about these millennials. So part of what we have to do is think about, how do we create the kind of place where millennials wanna come to? Because they are moving places. They're just not moving here. So one of the ways we do that is capitalizing on what we already have for terrific assets. And one thing that we all know, people that have lived and loved Shasbury and growing up in this area, is that we have incredible quality of life. This is a great place to live, and that is one of the ways that we can tell our story and get folks to come here. Uh, and I'll tell you right now, we have jobs around, so it's not just a matter of jobs. We have low unemployment. It's under four percent unemployment. The problem is we don't have the right kind of jobs. We want more, better jobs, and one of the ways we're gonna get those here is by attracting exactly that target demographic.
And I, I was talking to Tom Jenkins, you know, the Chairman of the Bennington Board, and I just found out that way up behind Home Depot, that they held up for years and years and years to be industrial, has been changed so they can put pretty much anything in there now. Have you heard anything going in there?
Nope. So, all that contention that happened for the last ten years about turning the jobs control site into what you're referencing to, to a more sustainable model of commercial.
Yeah.
And we were supposed to have waves of people come in once we changed it to commercial, and that hasn't happened either. You know, I think Jonah's point also is, is, uh, we're doing a better job at communicating our assets too. And we just unveiled our, our Shire's Area Guide. I think we're doing it smarter, faster, and better than we have, uh, in the past. And so our ability to go out and go to these travel shows or go and, uh, provide a presence online, um, that's hopefully why these guys hired me, uh, is to help bring in, um, some of that newer audience and, and our ability to, you know, our best, we are a very good best kept secret. You can go, 'cause I've done it, you can go fifty miles that way, that way, that way, and when you come back here, there definitely is something special about this area. I just don't think we've communicated that well over the last twenty... I just don't think we've communicated that well over the last twenty to thirty years. Or there are new tools out there that help us communicate that more, whether that be Facebook and social media, whether that be just the way that we design things and share our narrative and share our story. And so I think we saw that work very well in the last two years of Bennington. And so I think our purpose is to say, well, gosh, if you did it so well in Bennington, and there's nothing, I mean, we kind of waited for a year to see what was gonna happen at Manchester, and we kind of were very patient and very, I think, brotherly and sisterly by offering any support services. And we didn't see a Chamber kind of emerge from that. We did see an MBA art.
What he's referring to is Manchester Chamber of Commerce went bankrupt. Okay, I didn't know if you knew that job.
And so what we wanna, and so what we're seeing is there is a gap there. And so merely kind of trying to say, hey, can we take the skills that we did very well over the last two years and expand them into that territory?
You mentioned Saratoga as an example.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to note that, look, when we do things here, we have to be smarter and more efficient in how we do it, and here's why. In Saratoga, last year, they got fifty million dollars to market themselves from the state of New York and from tax revenue. Fifty million dollars. Can you imagine what that would be like in this area? So the fact is, that's why one of the things we need to do is work together, work with communities and get the word out, and essentially all head in the same direction. Look, we're gonna be piloting a lot of different boats here, but as long as we're going in the same direction down the river, we're gonna actually get someplace.
Well, the other thing is, it's like a while ago, they were talking about a BJ's Wholesale in Rockland. That mall up there is dead anyway. Stuck their finger in, oh, well, you gotta pay us something if you go down there. And I don't know, I think it died, but would they be, is that too far a face to get a BJ's and try to get a BJ's in here?
I would suspect that now is not the right time for big box retailers in general in this country. This past quarter was the worst retail quarter ever for retail in this country, and its focal point is in exactly those kind of department stores and big box stores that you mentioned. So I'd be hesitant to put a lot of eggs in that basket at this time. I think what's stronger for us is the smaller experiential type stores, specialty stores. Those are what's gonna be more successful in the near future, and it's because of Amazon. I'll tell you right now, people are doing so much buying online, and it's finally hitting that point where they're seeing the malls emptying out, as you mentioned at the Diamond Mall right now, so.
Well, that was, that was the choice of the stores that were in there anyway. That thing, it was all right for the first two or three years, and then it.
Well, same thing Berkshire Mall is also suffering, malls in general, there's, we have more retail space than we need right now, and that trend is gonna continue. We've actually hit a tipping point in terms of internet sales, and I'd be hesitant to put a lot of.
Well, I guess I'm saying it wrong. Not necessarily retail, but something where people wanna come here.
Absolutely.
So you've got a reason to come here, not a reason to go to Albany.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I think having expanded Walmart did address some of that, as you pointed out. But frankly, I would rather get the people from Albany to come here, and they're not gonna do it because of the availability of big box stores, but they may do it because of the awesome craft beer we have here, or the awesome.
Well, I don't, one thing alone isn't gonna do it anyway.
Correct.
Because that's not what Saratoga is. Saratoga started as big box stores, and then the little stuff started to fill them in between.
Yeah, they also have a racetrack, and they have a performing arts center, which are just.
Back too far away.
And an awfully nice lake as well. But I would say that the brook trout fishing in Shasbury is some of the best on the planet.
Yeah, that's really, I think, to Jonah's point, we have to work with the strengths that we have. And so part of that is, and Jonah and I are actually having this conversation, I'm gonna ride up, that, and we've had it with John Shanahan for Downtown, and we've had it with some of the Manchester Business Association up there in Manchester, really that experiential. You know, we're not gonna draw Albany away from its big Walmart and box store to have another big box store here, and we know that they're failing. What we can attract them with is, do you wanna get out of the smog and congestion and chaos of Albany, or even a New York City for a weekend, or a Boston, and come up to a place where you can have what I like to call kind of the REI experience, right? So you can come up, strap up your boots, and go for a good hike, and go get a beer afterwards or have some fine cheeses. I think we're in the era of artisanal craftsmanship, or we're going back to that era where, look, I can get anything on Amazon, so I don't need to go to a mall. What I can't get is, I can't get some fine jewelry from Hawkins House, because it's one of a kind, you can't get that anywhere else. So as I come up here with my family and I wanna get away from the chaos, and I have a great place to stay, and I have a great place to go eat, I'm also gonna go into these shops and find this great experience, because I'm treated by Jonah, who's friendly, and a Vermonter too. So I think when we look at the trends, when we look at where the world is going, it's interesting when getting more dense in certain locations like downtowns and cities, and we're also seeing that a millennial generation wants to get out and experience things. So I can go listen to iTunes and go to Spotify and listen to music, but I will never be able to hear live music unless I'm there listening to live music. And so we need to build in those experiential things.
I wouldn't be against a BJ's coming.
Yeah, well, no, I'm just saying you need a mix. But there was another thing, a few years ago, when Home Depot moved into Bennington. That was, the zoning down there says, okay, you can have Home Depot, but you can't have the whole mall. That was the little shopping mall down there. So they made them put that dollar store at the end of it. So that's a Class B Home Depot store. They wanted a Class A Home Depot store, which would be full size for whatever they considered full size. So when I was doing a landscaping job, I had to go to Latham, New York to get my supplies for the landscaping job, because they couldn't get them in Bennington. Because the planters in Bennington, and if you're in print of wisdom, oh, you can't have the big store. So, you know, time will shoot yourself in the foot. I mean, it wasn't a million dollar job, but it's just such stuff as that. And then they turned it out, and you fought the Walmart store to be a smaller store for how many years? And you can't get out of that place though, but the parking lot's full of parking lot town.
And I think we were just meeting with the planning commission, so what we're trying to do is find a balance between keeping what makes this place so special and also being competitive in a new marketplace, right? And so we have to constantly, and that's, we don't have an answer. You know, we, one, you know, that's more of a, I think, of a Bennington Select Board issue and kind of town and zoning, which is a little bit out of our purview.
Yeah, well, no, I just use that as an example.
But I think also the idea that, you know, we need to be able to save our downtowns, our, because that's why people aren't coming to Vermont to do that. While also saying we need to probably increase our ability to have a cellphone call as we drive through Vermont, and probably need some Wi-Fi capability so that the millennials can come here and telecommute. You know, we were talking about that also, saying, look, why not live in the Shires and live on, you know, green mountain park area, but telecommute or do your work in an Albany or a Saratoga? Because I think that that's actually what's gonna be more attractive. As the world gets more chaotic in this administration and beyond, I think we're gonna see wanting to get back to some sort of peace and mindfulness. And so if we can provide that safe haven for people and provide the ability to access the technology and the information and that sort of thing, we might see a balance. And they may not want, you know, Home Depot, in ten years, you're gonna be able to order any piece of lumber, and you're gonna have it three dimensionally printed anyways, so.
Well, no.
Good luck, Home Depot.
I would use that as an example, because, you know, like they say, it made a difference to me, I gotta run forty miles to get the same supplies that I should have been able to get right then.
Yeah.
And I just couldn't choose the difference in the reason, that was all.
Joe has a comment here.
Well, I was gonna say that, and of course, as Jonah knows, I grew up in this area as well from a childhood. But, and I am on board with everything you're saying about handcrafted beers, as I love myself and I do love culture and music. That's all well and fine. And you do have to have a specialty shop if you're gonna survive in today's world in Bennington, Vermont. But there is one thing that we do need, and we need industry probably more than we need that. It is good to bring people into the town, and I'm not against it, and I'm all for what you guys are saying, and I really thank you for putting the time into it. It sounds like you've really got your ducks in a row. But one thing that does support taxes is industry. And right now, like even in Shasbury, thirty percent of Shasbury works, the other seventy percent is either on assistance or they're retired. And taxes just keep going up exponentially. We need to find a way to cut that down, and one way to do that is with industry. These small shops, they help, they help out a lot, and I am not against that one bit. And what you guys are talking about is spot on, great, and I'd love to see that. But we really need to focus on industry as well. We need to bring industry back.
And so let me, I'll speak for that if you want. I mean, just note that we're very heavily involved with what's called the RED Group, which is the Regional Economic Development Group, which is, spans from Bennington, Shasbury, Arlington, all the way up to Manchester and Dorset. That group is positioned to start to create a comprehensive economic development strategy much like Wyndham has. We've also approached Wyndham's SEDS process. And pretty much where they're at and where we're at is separate, interestingly again, that if we work separately, we cannot acquire the federal grants and federal dollars that would stimulate the southern tier of Vermont. If we combine our SEDS process, the Wyndham SEDS, and eventually the RED Group SEDS, we will be able to go after some of those larger allocated dollars, which would be a lot within infrastructure, manufacturing, green technology, Wi-Fi capability, cellular, you know, build out. But we have to work together. And so I think part of the Chamber, part of what I like that we're, I feel like we're doing, is as much as Bill Colvin and the BCRC is building out that REDS group, that's gonna be about a three to four to five year process. We've actually kind of jumped the gun a little bit and have been starting to sow the seeds a little bit in Manchester to help us get along a lot better than perhaps we've done in the past. And so I think BCRC, and they know this, we work very well with them, are liking the idea that we've kind of already started this, and we're the Shires Group. I mean, Wyndham's a little envious, because they don't have a brand. We have a brand. We are the Shires of Vermont. And so from the Northshire to the Southshire, we have a group of people that are dedicated to some of that, and it looks like it's gonna move quite quickly forward. And so I know that's a roundabout way, and I want Jonah to answer to it, but I know with those kind of macro issues of how do you build in kind of new manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, whatever you might call it, green manufacturing, know that the Chamber is definitely at the table, having those tough conversations.
Yeah, I'm actually glad you pointed that out, because it's so easy when we talk about the Chamber and with our apparent focus on travel and tourism, to forget that we're also deeply embedded with that economic development effort as well. But there is a direct correlation between people that are travelers and visitors to our area and those that end up starting businesses in this area. I was struck at a conference this past Wednesday, or I'm sorry, last Wednesday, where Steve Cook, the head of our Department of Tourism, used a really elegant device. He said, and there was a room full of people, and these are all people with good jobs, making good money, who are active in Vermont at this conference, and he said, raise your hand if you were born in Vermont. And, well, no, he did the opposite, raise your hand if you were not born in Vermont. And two-thirds of the room, of course, raised their hand. And the point is, one of the ways we grow our economy is by getting people here, let them see our quality of life, let them experience Vermont, what it is to be in Vermont, and then they end up coming here and opening businesses. He mentioned Dimitri from Global Z. That's a classic example of a family that came, vacationed here, and then ultimately started a business here, and now the kids are working here and continuing that process along. So there's sort of the heavy lift, long-term planning, economic development component, where we're working with BCIC and BCRC with our SEDS, along with Wyndham County, to come like this, to get to the level where we can leverage those federal dollars. And then sort of on the more micro end, thinking about marketing our regions, so we get the people here to experience what we have, and hopefully get some economic activity that way as well. So there's the immediate benefit of them coming as a visitor, and then the long-term benefit, because so many of them do come back or end up, you know, staying there. Great question.
Well, I just, I do remember like North Bennington back in the seventies, leaving Shasbury, it was alive and kicking, they had Jay's Mill, Polytooth, Fresco, Green Mountain Furniture.
Stanley Tools.
Yes, Stanley Tools. I mean, you know, and that's the thing, that's back when taxes were low, because we had all this industry to support taxes. When industry started, you know, taking off to Mexico or wherever they ended up, that's when everybody felt the pain.
And you made the other excellent point, which is that our population's aging. And at this rate, we're not gonna have enough workers at the base to support our tax claim. So, you know, we have to reverse that. And one of the ways that we're thinking of reversing it is we need to see actual increase in population. That's something that we've been stymied about for the last hundred years.
Well, one thing that I've seen over the years that I've lived here, you're talking about increasing population, I've seen increase in population for people coming from Connecticut, New Jersey, they're coming here because we have better welfare. That's a, that's a reality, okay? This is a reality. The other thing we need to reverse, wanna reverse things, we need to reverse that heroin smear that we have, thanks to, you know, the Wall Street Journal and other medias that have listed Bennington as heroin haven.
And the fact is, we're really, heroin's everywhere, right? We're just more truthful about it, I would argue. Although the misreporting was absolutely scandalous, and it's always striking me that despite the job our students did in countermanding that bad information, there was never that really good article in The Times retracting that poor reporting. So you're absolutely right, counting that story is important, but I'll tell you right now, one fact that you can be very proud of is we are the, we have the lowest violent crime rate in the entire country. Vermont's a safe place to live. Sure, we got our problems, but at least we're gonna address them and face them head on.
Every homeowner has a gun too, Jonah.
Right, right, isn't that right?
Well, and I think that's again where we've done, I think, a good job in the last two years of changing the conversation. And for those, at least from the Bennington perspective, who have been on the Facebook groups or even read commentaries in the paper, or have even seen it kind of spill out into public forums, there's been a long, you know, issues that we can all talk about. I think when I came on board and Art was still on the board and Jonah, we made a clear decision to stop the, and force behind me, my board is here. We made a really clear decision to be above the fray and start to, you know, if you don't like what's being said, then start to have a different conversation. And so we systematically just started to, whether that be through our Facebook page, whether that be through our Bennington Made series, or Bennington Demora series, or I wrote fifty-two columns in The Banner last year, any which way that we could start to infuse people, we just, well, have you ever thought about this over here? I know we talked about this for the last fifty to a hundred years, but have you ever thought about this perspective, which is you actually do live in, if you, Vermont is the safest state in the country. Bennington is the actual safest county in all the counties, so you could claim the fame that you live in the safest place in the whole entire world. Of course, that doesn't make the front page of the New York Times. But we can start to have that narrative, and that to me is the one way that you're gonna fight, we do have heroin everywhere.
Everywhere in the country, to be clear.
Everywhere in the country. And so we start to say, yep, and we're better at rooting it out, and Chief Doucette and Sheriff Schmidt have done a great job at building task forces to root that out, and I hope one day it shows that we have the lowest of that. And I think, you know, we talked about it at our last meeting, building up that socioeconomic population too. That rising tide lifts all boats, so if we can lift a lot of people up based on work and based on jobs, we have some pretty long-range goals, I know from a Chamber that says we wanna increase workforce development and workforce output by X percent by this year. So I know that those are pretty audacious goals, but know that we're focused on that.
What's the, what's the plan for, I don't know, they call it the Greenberg Block? What's, I've heard things about that, but nothing to write.
It's exciting.
I can speak briefly, because we actually, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take away from Bill Colvin's trumpet and all the stuff that he has done, because he's been an amazing catalyst to that project.
He's another Shasbury boy, by the way.
Yeah.
So I know he could speak ten times better than I could to the project, but it looks like it is a go-ahead. They had their open house last week.
Very well attended.
Very well attended. Fifty million dollar project, it'll be the biggest definitely in the state of Vermont this year, and if not in the last hundred years.
Is it actually the old, or is it just?
My understanding is it's, oh, it's, I don't know if they've signed up a debt out of line, but they don't do an open house and invite the town to a possibility. In my mind, it is, it's pretty much a done deal. In my mind, it is, it's pretty much a done deal.
Because I, I have to admit that I'm not up on that way. I probably oughta be, but. Because something like that, you get one good big thing going. I don't care what it is. It, it, it tends to, it's like a tree, real roots.
It's gonna be transformative for downtown.
And we've seen that already in people buying up spaces in downtown. I think of another board member that we have that went and bought the Rembrandt Building because he believes in what they're doing with downtown. They, he believes in the Putnam Block.
Because the downtown, that's what I'm like.
And I think you're gonna see a lot more of that as this plan, you know, first phase is gonna be done by 2018, 2019. So we're gonna see massive growth just in that area. And I think as that becomes a realization, like you're saying, is this true or not? And as that becomes a realization, you're gonna need to start to see other people go, well, I may not be able to buy into that Putnam Block, but, you know, the Heart Lock down the street.
Right, because it was, yeah, the center across the street, it's.
Actually, just speaking of across the street, the Husser Falls Credit Union, now rebranded as the Tri-State Bank, has recently bought that property and is investing well over a million dollars in developing a business there as well, so.
They find that funny sight.
Is that the one you were thinking of?
Well, I was thinking what, what the hotel Putnam used to be, St. Seade, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
And go back to the Green Road Block, it's crossed at the back.
That's correct.
In the back of that, in the back of that building you're talking about.
Yes. Although that's a different project that is just happening simultaneously or coincidentally. The Putnam Project is bounded by those four streets. West Main Street, Washington Avenue, Franklin, and South Main Street.
Now, if you get something like that, then what do you want?
It's on, isn't it?
That's Frank, no, it's Franklin Street, the alley.
Yeah, it won't go all the way up.
It won't go all the way up?
And then whatever, Route 7 on the.
Now, you get something like that, and it really works. Aren't you gonna need a parking garage?
There's not a parking garage as part of the plan right now.
Well, no, but I mean, if you get something that big.
We might need one eventually.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I would love that. That's.
So the Chamber is businesses coming together to help businesses?
I would say, please, sir.
Specifically, can you do for Shasbury or can Shasbury do for the Chamber?
I would just briefly say that our mission is bigger than just businesses, although of course we are a membership organization at our root. But our mission statement is broader than that. We also see ourselves as a leader for the community as a whole. And we do take that very seriously at the board level and on the ground with what we do at the Chamber. In terms of Shasbury, you're in a charmed position. Shasbury and Arlington, you guys are the heart of the Shires. You're nestled between Bennington and Manchester. And what we're doing is absolutely gonna benefit any businesses' development in Shasbury. One of the things we've done is highlighting the Route 7A corridor, which we now call the Shires of Vermont Byway. We have signage on that, there's interpretation, we're marketing that actively. It's the second most requested thing for information when people call the state of Vermont, is information about their byways. So these are things that I would love to see places like the Old Heritage finally getting a new life because we'll have the kind of rejuvenation in the area that would make that possible. So you're in a similar situation with Arlington and all these other smaller communities in between. We have struggled, and in fact, my parents' business started in Shasbury on Route 7A. And when the new highway, I still think of it that way.
Yeah, me too.
When that came in, that really changed the face of small business along that 7A corridor. So my hope is that this effort will make Shasbury more attractive, both for small business and also for people just to come live here. Because again, I'm serious about this 10% increase in population because our elementary school systems, unless we continue to get some growth or at least stop the decline in the short term and have some growth, we're gonna have some serious problems down the road as folks age.
And I would also, um.
Good morning, I'm sorry. We talk, I talk too much, I apologize.
Get us a sword light in here, will ya? A sword blade for Bennington. Okay, so for the Bennington Sword Blade.
I wanna mention just one thing that the Chamber has done for us lately, for me in particular, well, not me in particular, but I was looking for hiking opportunities in Bennington. And I went and Googled hiking Bennington, Vermont. And things come up very slowly when you Google them. You get one page, you know, first page you get, you know, there's some trails at Vermont College, Southern Vermont College. Second page, you might get one of the Green Mountain Trail, the Green Mountain Forest Trails. And I mentioned that to Jim Sullivan at BCRC. He immediately put me into contact with Jonah and Matt, and we got together. I compiled a list, and with a week, within a week, they've got up on their Chamber page all the hiking trails that are online in this area on one page. So that, that I was really impressed with, that, you know, I was, when I started thinking, yeah, this could be a project that, you know, I could get involved in and work on for a year.
So we did. Well, and it's really snowballed from there, is partly because of your inspiration. It is something that I was thinking about as well. So I love the fact that you stepped up to the plate, you've been incredibly useful. And that's the example of the Chamber, works with people, whoever wants to step up to try to make things better. Like Matt was saying, look, there's enough people out there that are saying the glass is half-empty. It's half-full in my opinion, and I'm liking the taste of it.
The one thing I do like to mention, especially at select board meetings, is just to recognize and for the public to recognize that we don't receive taxes from, from any of the entities, and we're not here to ask for anything. I think that sometimes, based on prior Chambers and what they've had to do, that's not what Jonah and I are doing here. So I'd just like to reiterate, reiterate that we're gonna expand, we're gonna do it organically, we're gonna do it, we have a very fiscally responsible board. And we're gonna do it by our own means. And I think what we would be asking of all of you gentlemen would be just to create that kind of positive tone. You know, to me, we're in such a unique situ, well, we're in, we're in small towns, and so people talk. And so when you butt up against that glass half-empty person or the ones that say, man, I can't stand that Matt guy, they say, you know what, I've actually sat down with them, and they're pretty transparent. And man, you know, if they make mistakes, they go and they try to fix them. And that's the best we can ask of a Chamber, of the people leading our communities, including yourselves. And so I would say, you know, be patient with us. We're kind of doing this, all trying to figure it out on our own as we meet as a board monthly and trying to figure out the safest way to do this, the best way to do this, the most fiscally responsible way to do it. But we're also open up to new, to new ideas and to hear from all of you as well. And a great example of how I want my Chamber to be run, which is somebody comes and they say, I want a recreation page. I don't know what that means or how to do it, but can you show me, can you help me? And we wanna put our staff and me and our board to good use to help you do that.
Good. Any other questions? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I will say, the other thing we're doing is we're having a great time doing this. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming in. Okay, Forrest Wayne from the Bennington Rescue Squad is here to tell us about EMS Week.
It's a tough act to follow.
Doing phenomenal things. So EMS Week is next week. Is a week that is established of mid-seventies, late sixties, early seventies as a, as a time to sort of celebrate EMS and the work that the first responders do in all the communities. There's a ton of events going on. We're involved in schools, we do some stuff in-house, we do some staff appreciation. Really just to bring awareness about what EMS does in the communities and in, in all the areas. It's far from, not just the emergency side of things, but the prevention efforts that we're working on, trying to keep people from calling EMS, trying to keep people out of the hospital, trying to make a healthier community overall. So one of the things that we, one of the initiatives with EMS Week is to solicit our local elected officials for proclamations and sort of shows of support for EMS Week to help us celebrate and promote our industry.
Terrific. I think we're probably all agreeable. Would you like to read the proclamation?
Sure.
If you would like us to invoke?
Sure, sure. Designating the week of May 21st to the 22nd, or excuse me, 21st through the 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and paying education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value in a common interest of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, we, the select board of the town of Shasbury, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of 21st through the 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS Strong, Always in Service, we encourage the community to observe this week, to thank those that are always there in our town of need.
I made the motion.
Art has made the motion to accept the, to, to accept the promotion, the proclamation for Emergency Services Week.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ken Harrington. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is approved by a vote of 4-0-0. Thank you. Can I add a couple more comments?
Absolutely.
We have a couple exciting things coming up. Obviously, Tony Krulikowski has joined our board. We are orienting him, he kinda jumped, he kinda, we had an unexpected vacancy, and he was thankfully able to fill in. So we got him in, we'll do some orientation with him this week, get him up to board so he can understand some of the processes and things that we have. We send a large pack of information with him every week, every month, to help us with that. So we're really pleased to have him on board and to have that discussion back and forth. We have some exciting things coming up. June 24th, we're having our Rescue Fest at our station, which is our, it's an event for us to celebrate, have some kids' games and a little bit of live music. And it is a fundraiser for us to try to get some donations in. Saturday, June 24th, I believe it's 11:00 to 2:00, not, not commensurate long. You can come, third stuff, me, I'll be in the dunk tank. I haven't been assigned a time yet. The next thing is May 22nd, which is next Monday at 11:00 a.m. We have a really exciting announcement. That's all I'm gonna give you right at this, at this point, at our station at 11:00 a.m. We have a really awesome community health initiative that we're going to announce. And then we found out last week that we're also getting recognized for another item from the state. So really awesome stuff happening at Emergency Rescue. So thank you very much for your time.
Very good. Would you like the original?
Sure.
Could you scan it and send us a copy?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Now back to the boring stuff. Proposed new town garage and transfer station.
Well, there's not much to say. It is actually boring. The buildings on our front are slated to be torn down between the 18th and the 26th, and that hole will be behind us. I spoke to Catamounts this morning, it's scheduled.
We got our permit?
Oh, yep, the permits are in, we're all set to go. The fire department did some training on it last week, just on the Yellow House. And so they're done with it, and they'll be torn down between the 18th and the 26th, and everything will be removed. Possibly a few days after the 26th, that's Catamounts Town Hall, but the town will be in right after it. The request for proposals for Architectural Services, been advertised in the Banner last week and again this week. That's out there, I've been contacted by some of the clearinghouses because these things are always monitored, and people put them on their websites and things. So we'll see how that develops. That's due back June 5th, I think, is the select board meeting that's due back for.
That's when the proposals were supposed to be back?
Be back, yeah. And then they'll begin the design phase, you know, fleshing it out to that second phase, the original morton thing that we talked about. And then we'll go to bid, you know, as planned, in September or early October because of the way things are bidding and advertising and everything. So we'll, we're on track. There's nothing, this is all the beginning of it. So some, it doesn't seem like much is going on up there, but I'm sure everybody will be relieved to see that property change. We'll do a little cleanup afterwards and a little planting of some seed and some grass just to keep it in place because eventually that hole, when the contract goes out, probably next year when construction starts, that hole area is gonna be leveled again by the site engineer and the site construction guys. But we don't want it to sit and look, you know, awful for the full year. So that's really it on the garage. There's nothing, nothing that we're waiting for bids and things. I have a liquor permit for 599 West Town Line Road. This is a wedding. It's being catered with alcohol by J.C.'s Tavern in Bennington. They expect 150 people. Of course, one that the clerk can't sign, this was, you can only do it for that. I went back through the records because I was a little curious. There's only been one other permit ever issued here, and that was back in 2015. So apparently they, I don't know if this is another family member, it's not clear on here, but it's, it's like a one-time use for the property.
It's only good for that one day?
It's only good for the one day, for the one wedding. 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m., 150 people. Coming Saturday, it's kind of late, they've been having this in already.
So move. Motion for Mark, seconded by Ken, to grant liquor license to, um, Joe Ken?
Yeah, and that's who, they do business at J.C.'s Tavern, but that first line is who the people are.
For J.C.'s Tavern to do a one-time event, a wedding on May 20th from 4:00 to 12:00, 4:00 to 12:00 a.m., I'm sure that means. 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. It says 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 p.m. Unless they're gonna party all night, maybe. Any discussion?
What was the, what did we give Judy the approval to do?
Only the events that are associated with Bank and College at the President's thing and for our Chamber and here timetables.
Okay, just those two.
Those two, that's the only two that they'll approve.
That's fine. Did we actually pass that motion?
Yes, because we changed it again after Judy retired so that Marlene could continue.
Yes, now I remember. Thank you.
Okay. I have no other discussion.
All right. All in favor, say aye. So the motion to grant a one-day liquor license for a wedding catered by J.C.'s Taverns at 135 Depot Street, that motion is approved for 0-0.
I think all you have to do is circle the boxes. I don't know where it is, just want me to circle it. Marlene signs and it's sent it up.
Oh, okay. Oh, submit it to, okay. All right. Oh, approved town city, is that?
Yes.
Here in the middle?
The only other thing I have is there's another legal, actually regarding someone leaving part of their estate to the town, requires a signature. I don't know how much of this is actually public information, but normally I just sign it, so I'm just signing it and send it back to the attorney so that they can proceed with the will. And say it's gonna be a donation according to the paperwork to the fire department.
To the fire department?
Yes, specifically, so.
Without objection, we'll let Dave sign that and send it back?
We'll get that done. And that is all I have for you.
Okay. Any other business? Review of action items, I've been kind of sloppy about this, so I'm gonna back up a little bit. On the third, Jim McGinnis, he is reviewing the Water Department rules and regs to, because we wanted to blend our purchasing policy with our, our formal regulations that we've rewritten a bit. So he's gonna look those over, and then at our next water board meeting, we're going to put that all together and vote on it. You and Jim, we're gonna work on the Water Department budget relative to a new assistant.
We'll have that for the second meeting in June, probably. Our normal meeting would be the first meeting in July, which is July 17.
Our normal meeting would be the first meeting in July, which is July third, which is another thing that the board should consider postponing that meeting, that's the Monday in the middle of a four-day weekend. I know for one that I'm gonna be out of state. I don't think many people will be paying much attention over a four-day weekend, so it might be worthwhile considering moving that. I'm sure many other towns are moving their meetings from that date. We're gonna move the water board forward so that we can pass the budget before the beginning of the year. But the, the regular meeting should probably be either brought up, well, it should not be brought up, we might pass, I mean, to sign some bills, but it should really be put back a week.
Yeah, we can meet the weekend before that, or the week before that, I mean.
Yeah, just assign some bills, and actually, whichever way you go, because it's gonna be, make two meetings a week, back-to-back, Mondays and Mondays, whichever direction you're going, so.
Yeah, but it's just to sign bills, so.
Yeah, so I'll be, yeah, because you don't wanna have a meeting on the third, I don't think anyone would be paying attention.
Not even me.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to do that now, or can we?
I'll, I'll send something around, and then I can post and change the website, because we'll just be calling a special meeting, so I'll send something around, we can all.
Yeah, so basically we'll have three meetings in June.
Yeah, pretty much, just so we pay bills on time.
Okay. You were going to look at the site distance problem on.
Yeah, that's out here. Yeah, and that's part of, I'm waiting now, because we're having the, the webinar on the sidewalk, on the pedestrian bicycle grant this Thursday, so I'm looking to see what information they have on that. Pushing it back that way is getting all kinds of approval from the state, which is gonna be time-consuming, but first I wanna look at it kind of holistically, like what are you gonna tell me about the corner? Because we can do the whole corner, that would be really nice, because sometimes that big truck is there, and it is a tough.
Right.
Angle to view sometimes. But that will be taking a little time to get this all through.
Okay.
But the, but what is marked off now is the standard state distance?
Yes, and that's the distance from the cross, the crosswalk. Unfortunately, the state doesn't have setbacks for cross lines and roads.
Yeah, good.
But you think they might get a chance to get it moved back?
Well, we get petition for it, and some boards they have look at it and make a decision. And I'll be going that way, going this way is kind of what I wanna hear on Thursday, because even in this direction, it's to be pushed back on both sides of the intersection. We should finish the intersection if we can, for a much smaller grant than the one over here, and our contribution, because it's pedestrian bicycles, ten percent, it's not twenty percent. So we could go this way for, for maybe all ten thousand dollars and have this thing connected to the bridge, and have a crosswalk on this side too, and, you know, you have to integrate addressing where the country store was, where the store across the street is, and, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of issues with, with that corner, but maybe bring the sidewalk up this way, so people could actually walk the town hall from the town center, you know, which you can't.
Is the, I put the sidewalk up in front of where the store was?
Ken, this is just, I'm looking at the grant, if there's money.
No, I'm just.
No, I don't, I don't know, we, that's part of the, and, you know, I'm sure that there'll be questions from the property owner across the street too, because that's used a certain way, but that's like a bus stop. It's, you'd have to start the process, you know, you have to take the first step and see how far you get. I mean, it could be total opposition to curbing this off or putting in parking spaces, or people think it's a good idea. So I'll see what they have to say, we'll start the process, and the public meetings are part of this, and we'll just see if anyone's up to it. Or maybe they just want us to curb off the corner, or maybe they don't want us to do it at all.
Because you put a sidewalk in front of that store, and the store is up.
Yeah.
They may do it anyway.
Yeah, or you can have, you know, remember that going this way, except for some section that doesn't have one, I don't know why, but, you know, that, this is cut-in parking going from the corner south. You can bring this curb over to the front, first telephone pole, to push the parking back, so you don't have a UPS truck parked right on the corner, but then you can have a cut-in to the front of the store, because the steps are almost in the states right away, and you can park there.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's, there's ways to look at this, and, and, you know, you get the dimensions out, and maybe there's something you can do to everyone's improvement, maybe there isn't, and it's just not gonna fly, but.
I don't think those steps are going down over the bank there, though, I'm not even sure they're usable.
Well, that's one of the things that caught my eye that made me think about this, is getting money to remove those. I don't know who put those in, but.
Well, they've been there, I've only lived here for a few days, but they've been there a lot of times, I can remember.
They've always been a fascination to me.
Yeah, they're just like there, and I kinda scratch my head every now and then, going, we should really dig those out.
Well, I think.
I don't know who they are, actually, but.
You gotta remember that the train depot used to be down there.
Yeah, I think that's, I think they had something doing it.
Oh, yeah, you know what, yeah, I did, I did forget that, so that was probably just put us the whiff halfway down.
Train station was down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not very welcoming upstairs. They're not even talking about.
Like the one I fell down.
Okay. One of the things on here is David's working on a grant application, he just told us about that. Remember when you do the minutes, we wanted to get that RFP that.
Yeah, into the minutes.
Into the minutes, and the local emergency management, local emergency operations plan was gonna get distributed to the select board, so that.
Didn't I put that in your, did we not scan it?
I don't think I've seen.
Oh, let me scan it, I, my phone has.
I don't remember seeing that.
Okay, I'll, I'll just put it in the Dropbox.
Okay, good.
I do it like this, I do it like this.